Good evening, everyone. For the January 23rd Lebanon City Council meeting, our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
............................................................ All right, now the Royal Column members. Madam Clerk, would you call the role, please?
Mike Kincaid.
Present.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Morris Jones.
Here.
Dick Robertson.
Present.
John Copeland.
Here.
Brent Wheat. Perhaps. Sierra Messenger.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, move on to the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. There are changes to the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
The motion to approve is our second.
Second.
Second from Sierra. All those here say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Minutes are approved. First item up will be swearing in tonight for the Lebanon Fire Department. Chief Pats.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to introduce Jacob Fussell. Jacob is a nine-year veteran of the Lebanon Fire Department, and I can't say enough good things about Jacob. He represents everything that's good about the fire service. Hard work, honest, determined. I remember when he went through the process to becoming a lieutenant, and we have this system that we go through, and we have a list, and we build it from there. And Jacob wasn't even sure that he wanted to apply for a lieutenant. We had some discussions, and he said, "Chief, I don't know if I'm ready for it yet." And I said, "Well, I believe that you are, and you've proven that. You lead from the front, and I believe it's time for you to make the next step in your career." And Jacob did very well in our process, and I'm very pleased tonight that I can introduce him, and the mayor can swear him in as the newest lieutenant at the Lebanon Fire Department. So ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce Jacob Fussell.
So you're gonna raise your right hand, left hand, and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Jacob Fussell.
solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And all laws and ordinances.
And all laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Lebanon.
Of the city of Lebanon.
And follow all orders.
And to follow all orders.
Of the officers appointed over me.
Of the officers appointed over me.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a member, as a lieutenant of the Lebanon Fire Department.
As a lieutenant of the Lebanon Fire Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Just wanted to take a moment here and give thanks for things to do. First and foremost, I'd like to thank my entire family. I have an amazing support system at home, and, you know, just more support than anyone could possibly ask for. Also, I wanted to thank the board for giving me this opportunity, and then the department, from administration all the way down to probationary firefighters. It's just a strong, dedicated company, I believe. Everybody that we have, everybody that pitches in, we all work together as a team. I'm honored to be able to be a lieutenant and to help lead, but also not forget my grounds as a firefighter. Again, thank you to everybody.
We'll briefly pause. I'm sure, I don't know if Jacob Samuel wants to stay for the meeting, but if you want to, feel free. But also, if you guys want to leave, no insult. So we'll pause briefly. Back up again.
Yeah.
Onto the agenda. On the old business, there's nothing on my agenda for old business. Is there anything from council?
No, sir.
Okay. New business, then. First item up is a discussion item concerning additional funding for the Big Four Next Level Trails contract for the Royal section. Derek Warren, are you here tonight? Or actually, Kevin Krulik, I believe?
I guess before I get started, I was under the impression that this item may be tabled to the next meeting.
And that's fine. We can do that. But, yeah. So unless there's questions for Kevin at the moment, or we can have a motion to table it.
I'd like to make a motion to table this and send this to a work session, budget work session, so that we can discuss this further, because we've got a lot of projects that we need to look at. How's that funding gonna happen in the next few years? And I just think it'd be better if we go through our budget to try to figure that out and then come back.
Okay. We have motion to table. Is there a second?
No, I'm second.
Motion to second. On behalf of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? All right, item is put on the table. Move on to the next item. This is ordinance 2023-01. Council to consider a right-of-way vacation on North Whit Road, also known as County Road North 150 West. So this is ordinance on first reading, and it'll be public hearing tonight as well. So Ben?
Good evening, council members. I will kind of walk through process for you, then a little bit of a brief overview, and then I know there's some representatives here from the IEDC and/or Pure Development to walk you through some of the road improvements that are proposed out in this area. And then certainly, we're happy to hear comments from those from the public who are impacted by this request, and certainly would like to have an opportunity to engage with them. And if they have any ideas, or suggestions, or concerns, or comments, make sure we can incorporate those by the time this comes back to you in February. So let me get my, wake my computer up here. So first, this is a right-of-way vacation request for Whit Road, as the mayor said. And in terms of process, what that requires is first, for a public hearing and recommendation from the Plan Commission, and we had that meeting last week on Tuesday. And then it's an annexation ordinance that's considered by the council. Tonight would be the first reading of that ordinance, along with the required public hearing, which was duly noticed. And then at the February, I believe it's 13th meeting, that would be your first meeting in February, then you would be considered the second reading of the ordinance and potential adoption of the ordinance. So just a quick recap, this was at the Plan Commission last week, we made a presentation, and they did make a positive recommendation for the vacation of the right-of-way subject to or conditioned upon evaluating and requiring an alternative route for Whit Road. And so that's what's, we started working on that effort. We'll talk a little bit about that generally tonight. We obviously don't have any routes identified. There's a lot of due diligence that has to go into determining exact routes for those. We have some rough ideas of, you know, obviously, there's a site in the middle, and you can either go west around or east around. So we wanted to talk about those things generally, and some of the important points we have to consider, get some input from the council on, so we can investigate that further over the next three weeks, and then certainly also input from the public as well. So I'll walk through a little bit of the presentation I gave the Plan Commission last week, and some of the information related therein, and it certainly relates to the consideration of that vacation. Then again, we'll go into a little bit more detail then about what we've learned in the last six days about operations of Eli Lilly, certainly as it relates to whether, what the routes we're considering. So if you want to bring the screen up for you, I'll just quickly walk through this. Just for a quick reminder, outlined in yellow is the Eli Lilly development site. It's a little over 600 acres. The border on the west is Interstate 65. On the east, generally, it's the CSX rail line. Here on the south here, this section here to the east, that's County Road 375 North. And then County Road 450 north is the northern boundary. And then Whit Road, it comes northbound directly through the center of the site. It kind of runs along this border here, and then it's about this three-quarter mile section that's the subject of the vacation request that runs right through the center of the Lilly site. Now, the IEDC will talk a little bit about the need for this, but certainly, as you can imagine, for a pharmaceutical company that's doing research and developing manufacturing, they have very high security needs. And so their request is to close that road to allow them to be able to secure their site. They will have one primary entrance that's located here on the south end. That would be for all employee and visitor traffic. And then a second entrance over here to the eastern end that would be for truck traffic, and that's the only ways in and out of this site. It's highly regulated, highly secure, getting out of sight, so having a public road through the middle is a big challenge in terms of being able to maintain that security. And they'll be able, I'm sure, to talk about that more. In terms of, as we were evaluating the request to close that road, a couple issues that we wanted to look at, at least in terms of planning and engineering, and that is, one, are we maintaining proper access to areas on Whit Road both south and north of this site? And I'll, let me pull up the second slide here. And this is a larger overview. Again, now, the Eli Lilly site is now in red in this area here. And so what we're talking about is for those areas that are south here on Whit Road, and then north going up to State Road 47 here to the north, are we making sure to that there is still proper access to those areas along both of these road segments? And what we determine in just in our evaluation is yes, we would be. So Whit Road, this southern section will remain open to this intersection, and then County Road 375 North, heading east to State Road 39, will be improved. And again, Pure Development will talk a little bit about what those improvements are. I do have some slides I'll go through quickly, but they'll talk about it in a little more detail. And so again, for those areas that are remaining along Whit Road, they will have access to their sites from either the south along Whit Road from 300 North, or from the east on 375 North. So again, we maintain two ways to get to those areas in case one of them happens to be blocked for an accident or something like that. There's another way to get to those areas. Same thing for on the Whit Road north of the site. Certainly, someone could access those areas coming down from the north, from State Road 47, and again, 450 north from the intersection of Whit Road over to State Road 39 will also be improved. And so again, there's an eastern leg that allows people access. Again, if one of those directions is blocked for an accident or something like that, there is another way to get to those sites. So that was important, us to make sure that there was more than one way to get to all sites, both north and south of the Lilly site, and we'll be doing that, or it will be done, as part of this project to improve these adjacent road segments. And the second thing we looked at is if this segment of Whit Road was vacated, what sorts of impacts does closing that segment of road have to the surrounding network? And then also with the projected additional traffic from Eli Lilly, and then also some of the other concepts for the overall LEAP development that are gonna also add traffic to this area, what sorts of improvements will be necessary to the surrounding network to make sure that it still works effectively? And so that's what this is starting to, at least just overall conceptualize, is the surrounding network. And there's already been one traffic study done, and there's several underway right now to look at this and make sure that we've really discovered the true impacts, or the projected impacts of the traffic to this area, and the volume of traffic that's gonna be generated just by Eli Lilly and other developments in here. So again, as I mentioned, Pure Development's gonna talk about some of those improvements for the detail. They kind of highlighted things here. Everything highlighted in blue is the road segments that are proposed for improvements in some way, shape, or form. And so you've got County Road 300 North, essentially from 52 over to 39 is being evaluated. You have Whit Road running from 300 up to Lilly Site, and then also 375 over to State Road 39. And then again, 450 and Whit Road heading north, those are all road segments that are proposed for improvements. In addition to the actual road segment, to making sure the road segments themselves can handle the volume of traffic, there's also important improvements that are gonna be necessary for intersections and railroad crossings, to make sure, again, that we've got the proper amount of turn lanes, the proper amount of through lanes, and all those things, and those that need to be signalized to make sure that there's proper ways to get through the intersections. There's proposals and recommendations for those as well. So this is just highlighting in yellow those intersections, and actually, the list of intersections is much longer than this. I know you guys have Kevin Krulik's analysis of the traffic studies, and his list of intersections is about twice as long as what I'm showing here. These are the ones in the immediate area, but he's also looking at a much wider area in terms of intersection improvements. But again, the 52 and 300 area, Whit Road and 300, Whit Road and State Road 39, again, we know that that's gonna become a much busier intersection, so there's recommendations for improvements there. In terms of how Eli Lilly Site will work, the trucks will be entering the site from off of State Road 39, 375. So this intersection at 375 and State Road 39 is an important one to evaluate and figure out how to make sure that trucks can make those left turns appropriately getting to the site. And then certainly also intersections on State Road 47 are also being evaluated. Certainly, a lower traffic impact as you get further north, but there still are impacts of those areas that need to be evaluated. And then in addition, that the large yellow circle here is not meant to show the location of the new interchange. It's meant to just generally show that there's an interchange being evaluated for this area that certainly will add the additional ability for regular vehicular traffic to jump on Interstate 65 in this area and sort of bypass the area around Eli Lilly. Let me then just, I will quickly go through some of the additional evaluation. This is just showing you the road classifications that are being considered for each of these road segments. You've got major east-west corridors, which would include 300 North. You've got minor truck routes, that would be the truck route I mentioned on 375, both urban and rural sections, depending on the section 375 you're looking at. And then you've got minor roads, which include 450. And then again, you've got a truck route that is the cross-section for Whit Road. So those classifications are what determines what the cross-sections of road will look like, which Pure Development will go through a little bit more detail here in a little bit. But this just kind of shows you what that cross-section of road looks like. This again is 300 North, looking at a boulevarded road here with turn lanes. This would be the urban minor truck route, which would be Whit Road south of the site. Again, this is the primary entrance to Eli Lilly Site, so a lot of significant improvements here, and particularly aesthetic improvements. And here's your rural segment, which would be 375 North, heading east out of the site. And then as you get to the minor roads, which would be more like 375 as you get over between the railroad tracks and 39, and then also 450. And then just to kind of cap it off here, as I mentioned, the interchange, this is the alternatives analysis that was prepared for NDOT. Again, that's still a process that's underway. The recommendations go to federal highway. Federal highway will actually determine the final location or the final alternatives that's determined. So it's not a decision that's made by the state or city of Lebanon or anybody locally. That's something that goes to federal highway, and they make decision as it's their interstate. So certainly, the options that are closest to Eli Lilly Site, which is shown here in this purple on the north end, there are sites essentially from 300 North all the way up to basically 375 or 350 that you see here. So these are the alternatives that most closely impact the area we're talking about. Certainly, you can see how those improvements might impact this area in and around 300 North and Whit Road. So just want to highlight those. Again, as we talk about alternative routes for your regular vehicular traffic, in addition to having State Road 39 and 52, there will also be a much, much more efficient way to get on Interstate 65 in this area. So again, kind of looking at how we spread traffic around the site, between those road improvements that are right around Lilly Site, and then obviously, the interchange that's gonna be determined by federal highway, we're really creating a road network that's gonna be able to handle the traffic as it's coming to the site. And just real quickly, you know, if the question comes up, well, who's paying for all those road segments? And that's part of the incentive package that's being offered to Eli Lilly to improve those roads. So that's not a cost that's being, that the city of Lebanon's gonna have to consider. That's something that's part of the state's incentive package, Eli Lilly, to improve all those road segments. One final, in terms of the recommendation coming from the Plan Commission. So again, as I mentioned, the recommendation was coming to you, a favorable recommendation for the vacation request of Whit Road, with a condition that there was a valuation and required alternative to Whit Road. And what we talked about, and what the public talked about in the meeting, is when you think about the overall volume of traffic, we know that the roads that are being improved can handle the volume of traffic. We looked at the proper levels of service, all the intersections work. But when you look at the type of traffic that makes up that overall total, there are different segments of vehicular traffic. You certainly have regular vehicular traffic. You have the truck traffic. It's gonna go on Eli Lilly Site and probably other sites in this area. And then we have another segment, which is agricultural traffic, and how do we manage agricultural traffic through this area? They a lot of times will use Whit Road to get through this area, because it's the only road that's not what I would call a higher-volume, higher-speed road. So the alternatives are State Road 39 and 52, and those are both higher-speed and higher-volume roads, which a lot of those slower-moving vehicles would prefer to avoid those as much as possible. Certainly, they can't avoid them altogether, but they prefer to avoid those. So the decision there at the Plan Commission was, is there a way we can find an alternative route for Whit Road? If this is gonna be closed, is there an alternative that will address that concern for this other segment of traffic? So that is underway, based on that recommendation. So we don't have specific routes to show you tonight. There's a lot of due diligence that goes into that, to figure out exactly where they're gonna go, and what's gonna work best and what's viable. So we're working on those. Certainly, as you can imagine, you've got Eli Lilly Site right in the middle, and you either go west around or you go east around. But exactly where those would fall, we're gonna be still, we're gonna continue working on those with the IEDC team to figure out what's viable. But what we wanted to do tonight is just talk about a couple things generally, and make sure that we've addressed questions you have, if there are certain direction you want us to look at, or certain guidance you have. We certainly want to take that into consideration. One thing, I guess, maybe I want to spend a little bit more time on before we turn it over. Let me go back here. So one question that we've been working on, we have a little bit more information tonight, is how does, so Eli Lilly has a rail siding that runs right along, it'll run essentially right along the railroad tracks, just west of the railroad tracks, and lead into their site. So the question we had is, how is that operation gonna work? How does that operation impact, say, 450 North and 375 North? And so they actually, Eli Lilly met with CSX late last week, and so we just have information hot off the presses as of tonight. So the way it will work, and actually, right now, their siding is shown, you enter, southbound trains would stop, and then back the cars into the siding. They're actually likely gonna be flipping that siding around, so it faces north. And so it will actually be northbound trains that would stop on the tracks. And so what they talked about with CSX is that they want to locate the switch about 200 feet south of 450, so it's towards the north end of their site. So what will happen is that northbound train will move forward and come to a stop, and they will decouple the front part of the train, so that the cars for Lilly are sitting on the tracks. And then Lilly will actually have a car mover that comes out of their site, decouples the cars that are for Lilly, and pulls them into the siding. So the main, the train will not actually leave the tracks off of the main line. The question then is, so what effect will that have on 450 or 375? So you will have a section, the back half of the train will be sitting next to their site, and most of those trains are at most a half-mile long, so that train will not come as far south as 375. So they'll be sitting approximately a half a mile north of that 375. So 375 will rarely ever get blocked, and most likely never, unless the trains get much longer years from now, when there's more users of this rail line. The question was, what happens to 450, because we know that train's gonna have to pull forward? And what they said is, is that train will stop if they are in a spot where they might block 450. They can always pull that forward past 450 to allow traffic to get through. So that's something they'll evaluate as it's happening. The CSX conductor will say, "Look, we got folks that are stopping on 450. We need to pull forward and get out of their way." So in terms of service, it's two to three deliveries a week, and the process will take approximately 30 to 35 minutes. So slowing down and coming to a stop takes about five to 10 minutes. There'll be about 15 to 20 minutes to switch the cars, and then another five minutes to recouple the cars and pull out. So the longest they expect to sit there is about 35 minutes. So again, so it's not a very long time, and it's only three times a week. So we're not really concerned about necessarily the volume of traffic. And again, as I mentioned, they'll be able, they'll have the ability to make sure that both 375 and 450 are open at all times, depending on how they've stopped there. So that was one of the things we just wanted to make sure to highlight for you guys, as we're looking at these various alternatives, it was important for us to figure out how their rail yard was gonna work, how often. I mean, if it was 10 times a week, or three times a week, we determine, it's about two to three times a week that they expect. And those trains that are using this line are not terribly long. They're usually less than a half-mile long, so their impact to the surrounding roads would be minimal. And as I mentioned, those rail crossings are also part of the evaluation of improvements. Certainly, right now, as you know, a lot of these aren't signalized, the rail crossings, so that is being considered. And of course, 300 North being a primary road, over time, that's gonna have to be considered for a grade separation. There's just gonna be so much traffic on 300 North, we can't expect that crossing to ever be impacted. So that's something that's also being considered as possible improvements there. So that's, tried to go through it relatively quickly, but give you a bunch of information. Again, as I mentioned, there's a lot of due diligence happening right now to determine viability of specific routes around the site, but that is underway. So we really wanted to use this time tonight to get your feedback, and then also the public's feedback, and make sure we incorporate those as much as possible into those determinations that are gonna be made over the next few weeks for the next meeting.
Any questions for Ben at this time? For Dick?
Ben, a question. You made the comment that State Road 39, 375 North, and 450 North would have truck traffic. Is that, that's not construction traffic, right?
No, that's, that would be once they're operational, and just 375 North. 450 is not gonna be a primary route for them. They won't have an entrance up there. The only thing that would be on the north side of their property is an emergency entrance in case something happens in another one. So all traffic will be either entering off of Whit Road from the south, or their truck route will be 375 coming in from the east.
Well, we know construction sites, okay? We know construction people.
Yep.
And they don't always follow the path, is what I'm getting at. So I was kind of concerned that if there was a lot of traffic coming up that way during a construction period, or whatever, I was wondering if NDOT might be in a position to probably put up a temporary light at either one, or has it been mentioned, at 375, 450, I mean?
Kevin's been involved in those conversations, looking at the routes to bring in construction traffic. Kevin, I don't know if you have any insight, oh, there he is, on what's being considered in terms of temporary measures?
Yeah, in terms of temporary measures for construction traffic, so what we understand, and Michael Watts with Pure Development can... In terms of preliminary or temporary construction measures, and Michael Watts with Pure Development may speak to this, but from the preliminary study that was done, the only temporary four construction improvements that would be needed are a right-turn lane and a temporary traffic signal at Whit Road and 47. So their plan is, the first year of construction to reconstruct Whit Road North from 450 to 47. During that first year, we were primarily talking about earthwork movement and foundations. It's not the full construction crew that you'll see once buildings start going vertical. So the plan is, is that job one is to create that construction entrance from the north, and have a temporary signal there to help control, to control that traffic. Those are the only temporary four construction improvements that the traffic model has projected at this time, but it's also being revisited.
Yeah. I understand that. I was just trying to think outside the box a little bit, knowing construction projects and so forth, and how some of the truckers go, and they forget where they're going, or it's a new guy, and he goes and shows us route based on his GPS and things like that, and eventually ends up causing problems and so forth. So anyway, just trying to think that way. Another, Kevin, you might answer this one. You know, the feds get to select the, where the interchange will go. Do you think there's an option that would select Option 6, the one that comes out at 375 North? I can't see it, but...
From what, from what we've understood, from the preliminary scoring of the options, the Options 7 and 8 are probably the most probable locations that would be chosen. So those are the two options that are north of 300, south of 375, and don't include the option, which is Option 9, which goes into 375. But I believe NDOT and their consultants are just finishing up that justification study, and that is, will be going to the hands of federal highway to make the ultimate final decision on which option is selected.
Now, also, I noticed that the drawings for the road improvements and so forth came from the Boone County Transportation Plan on the road segments.
Yeah, I mean...
And those are very similar to ours. options that are north of 300, south of 375, and don't include the option, which is Option 9, which goes into 375. But I believe NDOT and their consultants are just finishing up that justification study, and that is, will be going to the hands of Federal Highway to make the ultimate final decision on which option is selected.
Now, also, I noticed that the drawings for the road improvements and so forth came from the Boone County Transportation Plan on the road segments.
Yeah, I mean...
And those are very similar to ours, too, correct?
They are. In fact, if you were to overlay the county's thoroughfare plan and the city's thoroughfare plan on top of each other, they are seamless at their edges. And in fact, they were done at the same time by the same consultant. We did that on purpose.
Right.
And the county officials, highway department, county engineer, have been involved in all of these traffic and transportation discussions to date. So, you know, if, I don't want to make it seem like we're just speaking on behalf of the city, this has been a concerted effort between traffic engineers working for NDOT, traffic engineers working for the city, working for IEDC, traffic engineers working for Lilly, and then the governing bodies, city engineer, county engineer, have all been at these meetings and had a say and a voice in what is proposed. Anything that is done to county roads will be county level right-of-way permits that would have to be obtained. We can't force any of that to happen. But again, the county is at the table, working with the petitioner on the project.
Now, the railroad, have they been contacted as well? I'm assuming they have, just because of the spur, but when you're looking at 300, 375, and 450, every one of them are not very comfortable to get over. So I'm assuming that they're planning, I know they were planning a year or two ago to come in and do some improvements, and it didn't fit the notification. I think it was the county, I think, at the time, that stopped that at the time, because they had no planning of routes, and they were closing two roads at the same time. So I'm assuming they have been at the table as well, or have been spoken to?
CSX has not been at the table with us, but yes, it's my understanding that several of those different traffic engineers are working with the representatives from CSX, as well as Lilly working with representative of CSX, in order to obtain the permits to build that rail spur. And some of the preliminary commitments include a grade separated crossing at 300, and crossing arms and gates at 375 and 450. So yes, those coordinations are taking place. And as you're aware, CSX is not an entity that is to be fooled with. They have a very rigid process that you have to go through.
Yeah, that's all I have at the moment.
Any other questions for this time?
Yeah, Ben, so they are going to signalize the crossings at 375 and 450?
That's, per Kevin, yeah, yes, that's the intention.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's going to be a much higher volume of traffic using those roads than there is today, so it's going to be important to make sure to do that. Particularly now that there will be trains stopping along that route, they're going to need those signaled to make sure what the train's coming through, that's properly notified.
Any just questions this time? Kent, Mike from the IEDC and Pure Development?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Kent Franzen. I'm an attorney at 225 West Main Street here in Lebanon, and I represent the Indiana Economic Development Corporation in this proceeding, which is a road vacation petition before you. Also with us tonight is Michael Watts. He's been referenced earlier, a professional engineer with Pure Development, and Ian Nicolini, another representative of Pure Development. Pure Development is a partner in the development of this project. They're consultants who work with the applicant, the state, and the potential tenants to try to make this seamless and workable. As Ben indicated, the advertised purpose of this meeting tonight was to hold a required public hearing on the petition the IEDC has filed to vacate a portion of Whit Road, a three-quarter mile portion between 375 on the south end and 450 on the north end. This is a required public hearing by statute, which must be held within 30 days of the filing of the petition to vacate. We did appear before the Plan Commission last Tuesday night. State law does not require a hearing before the Plan Commission, but your city ordinance does require the Plan Commission to hear an application like this and make a recommendation to the council. So we had a public hearing last week, Tuesday, and then we're having another one tonight. It is your responsibility and authority and jurisdiction to make the final decision. The Plan Commission, as Ben indicated, makes a recommendation, which you are expected to consider, and I know you do, but it is ultimately your decision. In the interest of time, I wanted to ask that we merely incorporate into the record of this proceeding tonight, the information that was presented by the IEDC, and more particularly Eli Lilly and company at last week's meeting. Last Tuesday night was actually the first time there's actually been a presentation made, either on behalf of Lilly or by Lilly, as to exactly what it wants to do. There's been a lot of conversation about Lilly's plans, desire to acquire the 600 acres, and what they would do there, but there hasn't been any word from Lilly. Last week, Jen Massey was here. She's one of the site project managers for this project, and she outlined in some level of detail exactly what Lilly intends to do on this property, the number of buildings it will have, and the sorts of activities that will go on, how they will access the site, how they will use the rail option. She also talked about the need for safety and security. They're a chemical manufacturer, and they need control of their access points. They need a site that is secure from outside harms, and safe for the people who weren't there or come there. So it complicates things when you have a public roadway running right through the middle of a 600 acre parcel. Hence, they've asked that it be vacated. The council, of course, has the legal authority to vacate any road. Under circumstances, they're prescribed by state law. The state law specifies the considerations that go into a decision whether to vacate. And obviously, you can't block somebody's access to their own property, or access to churches and schools and other public facilities. That would be illogical, make no sense whatsoever. And the IEDC is the owner of all the land that touches this section of roadway. So there is no one whose land is rendered inaccessible because of, by reason of the closing of this road, should it occur. So what I'm proposing tonight, without going through all those details, you have the PowerPoint presentation and the materials that were presented. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them. Mr. Watts might be able to do a better job than I can, but this information is available. The meeting was televised, and the record is clearly available for anyone who wasn't able to see it, either on the council or in the public. As Ben mentioned, at last week's meeting, there was conversation about coming up with an alternative road to replace or supplement this portion of Whit Road, should it be vacated. That was four business days ago. I indicated at the conclusion of the last week's meeting that we would take that request seriously and in good faith, and I can represent to you truthfully that efforts are underway and have been engaged to look into options for finding another north-south route. It is complicated. There are any number of logistical issues, not the least of which is acquiring land, designing a road, figuring out where it ought to be exactly, what standards should it meet, what authority should we, do we need to seek from whoever has control of those options, and there simply hasn't been time to do that. It's our hope and intent to have that hammered out to where we can present that at the second reading of this vacation ordinance in three weeks from tonight. And we will work our hardest to see that that will come, and certainly the public will have the opportunity to ask questions at that time about what we have come up with, if anything, and they'll have an opportunity to weigh in at that time, before you make any decision on whether the road should be vacated and on what terms. But people have come tonight, as noticed, for a public hearing on the potential vacation of a portion of this roadway, and we're prepared to listen to their comments and take that information back to the folks we represent. So what we ask tonight is merely the opportunity to fully investigate our options. When I say "we," I'm not talking about Eli Lilly. I want to be very clear. I represent the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. They own this land. It's their petition. They'd like to look into what their options are. Obviously, they're going to talk to Lilly about it, and see what can be done. We'd like to not get bogged down tonight, if we can avoid it, in debating the pros and the cons, the pluses and the minuses of any number of possible alternatives. Again, neighbors are here. They can offer their comments, but we don't have any, we don't have any ability to analyze and respond to requests for detailed information about what it might be, could be, stands in the way, or allows for certain things to occur. So we'd like the opportunity to study it, listen to what the Plan Commission had to say, listen to what the public has to say, listen to what you council members have to say, and ask that you give us until the 13th of February to see what we can come up with. So that's all I have. Michael Watts is here to talk about the improvements to the other roads in the area, whether they be 47, State Road 47, 350, 375, I'm sorry, 450, or other sections of Whit Road. He made the same presentation last Tuesday night. Some people may have heard it and seen it, and be familiar with it. Other people may not. He's happy to go over any questions that you all have. At the end of the day, we want to answer your questions, so that you are comfortable making whatever decision you ultimately make on this petition. So, Michael, do you have anything, or you want to leave it up to questions?
Yeah, go ahead, Michael, and we'll do questions at the end.
Is that got enough in there? Just got to put my password correctly. Michael Watts, Pure Development, 815 East 65th Street, Indianapolis, Indiana. Really appreciate allowing us to speak tonight. I think Ben and Kevin did a good job of outlining the proposed improvements as part of this project. We've been working on this for months now. We've been working directly with Kevin and the county highway department, knowing that a number of these roads are now city roads after the annexation occurred, and then, you know, some of these roads will remain county roads. So we want to be a good partner, working with both teams. You know, ultimately, the goal is to improve accessibility all around the site. Most of these roads are currently two-lane county roads. They're narrow. They're not up to current city standards. They're not up to current county standards. So as part of this project, we want to bring them up to those standards. As Ben and Kevin both kind of walked through, you know, the main access for Eli Lilly and their employees is going to be up south Whit Road. Truck access will come in off of 375. The main reasons we want to improve North Whit Road and 450 is that, you know, if that section of Whit Road does get vacated, we want to allow good updated access for those people who use those roads to get through that area. But it's also upgrades for construction traffic. And I want to make it clear, North Whit Road will be primarily used for construction traffic. That traffic will go away once Lilly becomes operational. That will not be a main entrance for Eli Lilly. It's being purely, you know, really upgraded for their construction traffic. 450 north, we're going to work with the Eli Lilly team. We're proposing that not being used for any sort of construction traffic. I'll quickly walk through each one of these sections, and feel free to stop me if you have any questions. I do want to clarify that the interchange project and the improvements along 300, that's a DOT and federal highway project, so I'm kind of separating those projects out. If you have questions regarding those, those will have to go to the DOT or the federal highway to answer. The first section is South Whit Road. This is a two-lane boulevard section with center median and center turn lanes. The idea of this is allowed for future expansion. As the properties south of Eli Lilly develop, we can add in additional turn lanes in the center. We're working to acquire, you know, the right-of-way, so that in the future, if we need to put in Acel lanes, Decel lanes, right turn lanes, things like that, the right-of-way will be there to do that. And I just want to clarify as well to everyone that within this right-of-way process, we've been working with willing sellers on that right-of-way. It's no eminent domain or anything like that. It's going out and working with existing landowners to purchase the right-of-way needed for these improvements. Again, you know, with this being Lilly's main corridor into their site, we want it, it'll be some enhanced landscaping. You'll have a multi-use path on one side and a sidewalk on the other side. The second section I'll talk a little bit about is 375. As I mentioned, that'll be the main access for truck traffic. Lilly doesn't see using that road at all for employee traffic. It'll just be a secondary entrance in case, you know, South Whit Road gets blocked. The idea will be to improve that rail crossing there, to allow for better free-flowing traffic and improve the safety needs. There is a weight limited structure just east of the railway currently. That'll get taken out and improved, so that there's no issue in regards to heavy loads or heavy traffic. The goal of, and I will mention, the goal of 375 and northern Whit Road will be to get those improvements done as quickly as possible, starting construction this summer, with the goal of getting substantial completion by the end of the year, so that as Lilly's construction traffic ramps up in '24, those road sections will be open for their construction traffic. The last section I'll talk about is, I guess, the last two sections, North Whit Road. Again, this is the existing road section's a narrow two-lane county road. We'll put in a new road with 11-foot lanes and paved shoulders. More than likely, there won't be a trail section there, but again, there's a weight limited structure along North Whit Road. That will be removed and replaced with a bridge structure that'll allow for construction traffic and any future farm equipment traffic to use that road. Oh, my other section isn't in here. 450 north, the idea with 450 north is, it's an existing gravel road. That road will be upgraded and repaved, so that it'll be an asphalt road. Beyond that, I can answer any specific questions anybody has in regards to road sections or road improvements. As I mentioned, or as was mentioned earlier, we did hire ANF engineering several months ago to do a traffic study. The goal of that traffic study was to go out and take existing traffic counts of all the area intersections and roads. Kevin's expanded his request for what intersections he wanted us to look at, and so that update to the traffic study is currently ongoing. What we want to do was make sure that all new roads and interchanges will operate at a Level C, once Lilly becomes operational. And from the traffic study, these improvements would get us to that level. And then beyond that, with construction traffic, we will be working directly with Lilly on routing and temporary improvements. We talked about temporary signalization and temporary turn lanes. That's going to be an ongoing process with Eli Lilly and their team. Their traffic counts will fluctuate as the number of contractors on site changes in what they're doing, and what the routing will be. I mean, they want to have good free-flowing traffic and make sure everything is safe. So it will be an ongoing process on how that's done with traffic signal optimization and additional turn lanes and things like that.
Any questions for Michael from council this time?
I just have a comment. For those of us who are not road engineers, Level C and
For those of us who are not road engineers, Level C intersection means what?
And I'm not a traffic engineer, so you're putting me on the spot, but it just means that you're not going to back up a bunch of traffic at an interchange. There's openings, if it's a free-flowing road and you're trying to make a left turn out onto that road, that there's gaps in that traffic that you'll be able to get out on to. It just means you're not going to be stacking up traffic at any of these interchanges.
Mike, are you going to be working on the alternative route also?
Yes, yes. And I can't really speak in much detail tonight, just because that request came last week. As soon as we left that meeting last week, our consultants started working on what those routes could possibly look like. Kevin's given us suggestions on what that typical section for the road will look like. So I think within the next week or two, we'll have some good information to provide to council to review, so that you have some time before the next council meeting.
Okay, that was going to be my request, is to have some information prior to February 13th. Thank you.
Any additional questions for Michael? Any questions for Kent? Ben, any closing or anything? This time then, I will open the public hearing on ordinance 2023-01. If you have a public comment, please step forward, state your name and address for the record place. You have about three minutes to speak.
Good evening. My name's Bert Reese. Address 6519 North through 50 West, Thorntown, Indiana. And Pure Development, you set me up perfectly, saying that IDC is going to buy the right-of-ways. So during the Plan Commission meeting, I brought question, the city versus county jurisdiction. So yes, we're talking about the vacation of Whit Road. However, on the docket, we specifically named these road segments for improvement. So they have to be thoroughly analyzed to make this decision. So we'll start out with a history lesson. So in 1857, the Lebanon Royalton and the Lebanon Sugarco Gravel Road Companies were organized. In 1884, these roads were bought by taxpayers living along them and turned over to the county as part of the free gravel road system. Under Legislative Act 1877, petitions for free gravel roads were filed before the Board of Commissioners. From there, more roads were built. They were managed by the county commissioners as a board of free turnpike directors. So now let's look at the area in question. The map of Boone County way back in 1865 has parts of 300 North, Whit Road, 375 North, and 450 North on the map. By 1910, all the roads were established as we know them today, and probably were even sooner, but there's a gap in the maps. They were built by the county, managed by the county, and in some cases, given to the county by the taxpayers. So now let's talk about today. So here in my hand, I've got the legal right-of-way for part of 300 North with the county on your improvement plan. I've got the legal right-of-way with the county for part of your road improvement plan on 450. And I found them for 375 and other roads as well. So these that I have, they're very recent documents, and I found them electronically. Didn't get a chance to go to the courthouse, so that's what was available with my vague search terms. So there's a lot of files that are unindexed, but going to make a visit to the courthouse. So from looking through old deeds, descriptions, and finding right-of-way easement documents that are dating back to the early 1900s, I can guarantee you that somewhere in the records for Boone County, there is a right-of-way for this section of Whit Road. I've just not found it yet. So as for the ones that have been found, even if the IEDC buys the property, they inherit the easements. They can't just buy them. So let's look a little bit about what one of these right-of-way easements say. So the branter, so the person who owns the property, and then all the people who inherit that property afterwards, can at no time erect, place, or construct, or cause to be erected, placed, or construct in, into a pond, over, across, or under any easements of right-of-way granted herein any temporary or permanent structures. So, again, the jurisdiction, thinking about the county roads. Historically, they've been county. There's documentation that proves that county has the right and the right-of-ways to these roads. Thank you.
I'm John Allen. I live on 150. I was born in central Indiana in the 30s, and I've seen a lot -- lived here the whole time, except for four years in the military, and I've seen a lot of development. And very much what she said, I've never seen by the people for the people, public right-of-way given to for-profit business. And it seems like they would build their business on ground that they obtain from people that are willing to provide it instead of taking public right-of-way that belongs to the people. And as far as safety goes, they should be able to provide that for themselves. They've had to do it since Eli Lilly started just southwest of Lafayette years ago, when I remember. And so I'm basically repeating the same thing this nice lady just said. Thank you.
Further public comment?
My name is Jim Love. I live at 3150 North, State Road 52, Lebanon, Indiana. I think the things that you have to think about is the things we've heard at several of these meetings. And among the petitioners, oftentimes, we've heard some of their representatives tell us that if we don't do what they say, they will leave. One thing you have not heard from anyone that'll speak in this room on behalf of the community is, if you don't do what I say, I will leave. And you will not hear that from anyone in the Love family, because it is our intention to stay here and live here indefinitely. In doing so, we thought it would be imperative that we learned how to integrate with Eli Lilly. And so we attended the Plan and Commission meeting last week, and we thought it to be one of the most constructive meetings that I have attended in all my time of coming to this building and sitting through these meetings, because there was a brainstorming session that at the end actually created some very positive outcomes and some opportunities for both the community to get something that they wanted, as well as Lilly or IEDC are to determine who's who in this situation, to get something they wanted. And what Lilly wanted was sovereignty across their territory, and what we wanted was safety for people like our friend that's now in the front row of Bobby Hysong, who lost his life moving farm equipment up and down a state highway, which was the original alternative to the closure for Whit Road. So we brainstormed, and we came up with a couple -- a really great plan that said, let's run around the west end. That would be the least impact. Lilly won't even know we're there. And now we find out through the grapevine, which seems to be a pretty good tool and almost the only tool to get information anymore, that there's also a plan afoot to go around the east side. Well, if you're familiar with that area, I recommend that when you think about it, that you'll have to cross that road track multiple times. You'd have to make several left-hand turns. If you're not familiar with the area, please take the next three weeks and do so. Get out there and drive around, find out what's going on in the country. Because if you think about the two routes, the west route, which is the route that probably most of us that live out there and have to use this route with favor, removes local traffic from Lilly completely, passes by one home and one home only, because the rest of the people have been ran out of town, and it simply basically makes it so that Eli Lilly backs up their earthen berm or their wall from I-65 by 60 feet. You put a road around there, and you go up to 450, which was going to stay anyway. Seems like a reasonable plan. If you think about the possible options for the east plan, you're going to end up interacting with Lilly at a great deal of time, because one of the things you're going to do is you're going to interact with their rail crossing. And regardless of which way we turn the spur, a spur is a spur. And when you're loading and unloading trains, and you have a 35-minute wait, and you're trying to keep up with a combine, and the grain cart's full, 35 minutes in a semi is a long time while you're waiting to get back there to pick up the next load of grain. And that could stop operations, which although to some folks is not very important, it is very important, especially in a season when time is of an essence and you're trying to make your business of agriculture work smoothly. So keep in mind, I don't remember very many times when I've been sitting at a rail yard where the railman comes down and says, gee, Jim, are you in a hurry? We can move this train. We'd be glad to. It sounds like it's something that might happen, but I haven't seen it happen a lot. And I've used to sit up there on 52, waiting to go into Staley's and wait on that train. A lot of times, there's probably others in the room that have done the same. So keep in mind that the railroad is sometimes very hard to get along with and unbending. I believe there was even a movie about that. So when you think about that, the western route is safer for everyone, and that's all we wanted. We wanted a safer route that allowed us through, and we were more than happy to stay out of Lilly's way. It seemed like there was general consensus at that meeting, and there was very much optimism leaving that meeting, but that optimism has dwindled, as usual, because IEDC has decided that although we thought we had a voice in this, and you folks thought you were in charge of it, IEDC is now the dominating factor in our lives and appears to think that they will be making all decisions into the future as well. I would love to hear Eli Lilly get up and speak on this topic, because it appears to me that their name's getting dragged around through the mud pretty frequently over this topic, but I'm not 100% certain that we're not seeing IEDC trying to exert their muscle instead. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come up here again. Carrie Douglas, Boone County Preservation Group, 114 South Meridian Street. Or, yeah, when I came in tonight, I really wanted to come up here and kind of just plead that you guys listen to the public and that you understand that we're all in this together, that we're a united community. But after hearing what's going on, I just want to pose some questions. We don't get to get on the agenda, and we don't get to have the back-and-forth that the IEDC does. But just listening to the local city planners coming up here and speaking to you, I can hear a real concern for the local people. That's the way it should be. IEDC comes up here and they talk about Lilly, Lilly, Lilly. We also heard from Pure Development that they've been working on this road stuff for months. Have they talked to local people for months? Because when IEDC went to Lilly with this land, and Lilly wants, you know, to keep it secure from the outside, why did they buy something that has our major thoroughfare right in the middle of it? If local people had been involved, if there was transparency, if there was accountability at a local level, wouldn't they have maybe looked someplace else? I mean, the IEDC has taken 7,000 acres. Why did they have to have this 600 with a major thoroughfare for the Lebanon City and the rural people as what they took? Those are the questions that need to be asked and looked at. So I hear IEDC -- or Pure Development saying they've been working on this for months with Lilly. What about for the people? They're talking about interchanges and railroad transactions. Back when I was going to college, I actually had a job where I was involved with that. Two to three times a week is significant, and the plan that they have is going to fall apart. You're going to have traffic backups. I mean, talk to anybody who lives in Brownsburg. I lived in Brownsburg. The train would break. I mean, there's unforeseen things. 267 shut down for hours. My ex-husband actually fixed the train one time, and it was a big hero, but one of my favorite stories. Something that they're talking about, I had something else completely prepared to say to you, even was going to have extra time to offer to other people. When they show you these pictures of these fancy roads and the way they want to widen them and they want to make them safer, also remember that they're taking people's front yards, or they're taking crops from farmers. They can't just get land from anywhere. Are they going to take it from Lilly's portion? Because Lilly doesn't even want to give up a right-of-way on the west side. So that needs to be taken into account. The local people are the foundation of this community, and we need to see a cooperation of good faith from this council, that as the city changes, as our cultures change forever, that you guys are on our side and that you listen. That's all we're asking tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. Brian Daggy, 2005, West 250 North, Lebanon, speaking for the Boone County Farm Railroad. And I guess I'll mention tonight that representing over possibly 650 members actively involved in the agricultural industry. And I'm specifically saying ag industry, not just farming, but ag industry, because that's probably the biggest industry in the county. In fact, I would challenge everybody to say it's not. So the goal that we'd hoped for, and we had discussions with the Plan Commission, was not to vacate the road, because Whit Road is a major alternative to keep farms off state highways. You've heard some of the issues on that. I won't go through all of them again. I would encourage you to listen to the meeting last week if you didn't hear it, because a lot of good information was presented. Our preference would be not to vacate the road. Reckon that Lilly wants to have control of the site, which evidently had a flaw in it that they never pointed out to anybody to begin with, with the road going through it. Now by vacating, then the two options become either go to the west or go to the east. As Mr. Love pointed out, going to the east has many flaws, having to cross CSX tracks twice, making left turns, becomes really a problem. And still maintains a safety issue, I would maintain, when you're taking slow-moving aggregate with it across railroad tracks more often than you would have to. Going to the west would be our preferred route if we're going to have the alternative route. And in reference to earlier that they have to worry about how to get more land, right-of-way to go either way, actually, it becomes pretty easy to go to the west, because IEDC already has ownership of that ground. So they want to vacate the road. It would be pretty easy to tell them, fine, then give us the right-of-way. We need to construct an alternative route. And I would encourage you to do that. I think in the long run, in this kind of an issue, safety of the public, not just the ag public, but all the public, trumps any of their safety economic issues. I would encourage you to require them to go to the west. Thank you.
Hey, Brian. Who wants your question? Since you represent the Farm Bureau, is it safer to cross a railroad or a state highway, from your perspective?
Say that again?
Is it safer to cross a railroad or a state highway?
I think they both have inherent risks, and I'm not going to pretend to be able to quantitatively state one over the other. Our goal would be to stay off of both as much as we can.
I'm just trying to understand your scale of ranking. Thank you.
I understand the question. Thanks.
Further public comment?
Jeremy Goy, 6446 West 400 North. Having seen the plan that Lilly has come up with and the pure engineers have brought together, I don't see any real need to vacate Whit Road at all, because in the plan, you've got on the west side of the road, some solar panels, a walking path in one building. Rest of the building's on the other side of the road, along with plenty of green space. I would suggest, and I know Lilly's not here, hopefully they'll get this suggestion, along with pure engineers over there, just move the building to that green space on the east side of the road. And I think it would also behoove, of course, the workers at Lilly to have a more compact work area, where they can still have everything fenced in, everything secure, and not have to vacate Whit Road at all. And I would suggest that, I would say that that should be taken into account. Thank you.
Further public comment?
Good evening. Peggy Daggy, I live on 250 North, as Brian just explained. But I'm not speaking for myself tonight. I was asked to read this statement made by Ron Merrill at 8982 West 825 North, Thorntown. The construction of the new Lilly buildings and all the employment it will bring to the area will put our local farmers at risk when they have to use the surrounding roads to move their large equipment from one field to another. The additional traffic will be too much for the county roads to handle. Why can't Lilly be required to construct their own access roads so that state roads 39, 47, and 52 will not have that additional traffic? Lilly can make overpasses over Whit Road and the railroad. Lilly should have to put a stoplight at any state road they use, not the county. Lilly should not use county roads to enter or leave the company grounds. I'm concerned with what Lilly is going to do to not pollute water in surrounding areas with the waste chemicals from their company. With any of you on the committee, feel safe sending one of your local loved ones out on the surrounding roads in a slow-moving vehicle like a tractor with all the traffic the Lilly business will bring. Thank you.
Chuck Hunt, 2350 Laisville Road. Just a couple of questions, more than anything. I also was at the Plan Commission meeting, and when Ben coming up and said that they had an alternate plan they'd been working on, I seen a big relief here, right there, because they were finally getting some answers, some things that they had not been addressed or answered or followed through with, and I don't know if that's on the city, the state, IEDC, or Lilly. But the thing I'd like to ask the council is, are you actually going to vote on this without knowing fully where the alternate route is going to be? Ever been heard the phrase "pig in a poke"?
Check tonight's first reading. There wouldn't be a vote until second reading.
I understand you're not going to vote tonight, Matt, but what I'm asking, if they don't have a prepared agenda of where they're going to put this, or where they propose to put it, are you actually going to vote on it?
There will be a proposal at the next meeting.
You just did not answer my question.
I said there will be a proposal at the next meeting.
You're 100% sure? But with that, last meeting, there was a discussion about putting some, they hadn't decided what they're gonna do yet about the tracks, if that was gonna be your new interchange there for 65. A lot of us live on that side of town, 52, and if you shut down 300, how's that gonna work to get an ambulance out to the other side of 52? What route is that gonna have to take? I mean, these are people's families that live out here, so these are things that need to be thought of before we proceed with this. Thank you.
Tim Loose, 800 South 400 West. I'm one of several individuals, a farm and farm on both sides of the county. And this will affect me in many different ways. There's so many things going around in my head as far as how things could be and should be, and I realize I'm not gonna stop a lot of this as far as that goes. Because actually, I live just gonna be a quarter of a mile away from the south side of the Lee project, going all the way through the Lee project up into, across 65 somehow. And basically, my point is, not only the safety issue, I do agree that it would be a lot safer and hopefully the road would be less traveled if they would take the west side of the property as an easement around or a road around that. It scares me when I look at the pretty pictures of the streets because so far, everything that has been done with either the new entryway with Indianapolis Avenue, we were told those were supposed to be soft curbs, they're hard curbs. You know, both implement dealerships are on that side of the town, so it's hard to even get equipment through roads that are just barely wide enough, if wide enough to get your equipment. And then you've got the hard curb there that you can't, your tire keeps wanting to hop up and you want to bounce off that. Well, looking at these roads and these streets, especially 300 going north, in the picture at least, it doesn't look like a whole lot wider than a semi, so I'm assuming it's a 10 to 12-foot road. We need at least 15 feet. And then I would encourage, and I know that you guys may not have control of the design, I don't know, but I would encourage soft curbs on all these roads. So when you have a piece of farm equipment that's coming through, they literally can encroach a little bit on that curb without having to jump and bounce around. It's safer for an individual as far as the farmer goes, it's safer for the traffic around it. The other thing is, the way it looks like it's a single lane, it's two lanes, but it's a single lane one way. So now when I take my combine or tractor up 300, anyone behind me is gonna have to wait until I get to either pass Lilly, up to 39, or if I can jump off and go to the west and around that way, then maybe they can turn and go back towards 39. I don't know. But these are just some considerations that I guess I would have. I'm concerned about the safety. I'm also concerned about just getting across 65. Literally, there's not good ways. 32 is very dangerous, but we used to be able to do that a little bit, but now they've put the hard curbs right in the middle there in front of McDonald's and Ice Cream Paradise where you can't even hardly get through. There's a sign right there that you clip. Everything's so narrow, you're just limiting how we can even get through or get from one side of the county to the other. And I understand, you probably don't want traffic in town, and I don't want to be in town, but there aren't enough overpasses throughout the county that, you know, this overpass on 300 was one of the nicest ones because it was still a county road. Whit Road is fairly busy. 300 is fairly busy. So it wasn't the greatest thing, but it was better than going through downtown. So I just would encourage you, as they design these roads, keep farm equipment in mind, keep the curbs in mind, the trees, they had pictures of trees lining, you know, all those things encroach and it just basically takes the possibility of moving farm equipment through that area. So just keep those in mind. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Tim's a little taller than me, tiny bit. Hello, I'm Kim Love, 3150 North, State Road 52. So unlike what it seems, this is not my favorite use of my time presenting and arguing with our local city officials. It's not. But this county needs to be safe and inclusive for everyone. It has to accommodate safe travel for its citizens who live here, the people who come to work here, the delivery people who support our local businesses and manufacturing, as well as our farmers and our children on school buses. This bypass around Lilly is a must-have. Putting all of those aforementioned people down to Lilly's front gate, past their truck delivery entrance, and over railroad tracks twice is asinine. This design group, the Pure Company Development, showed us pictures of wide two-lane boulevards with a grass median full of trees and landscaping. An eight-road combine head, which is small by today's standards, is slightly longer than 20 feet. Modern tractors are approximately 13 and 1/2 feet tall, so now imagine this equipment going down the beautifully landscaped boulevards and ask yourself, how many road signs are they going to be destroyed? How many tree branches will be broken or trees knocked down as well as landscaping ran over? Who's going to scrape up all the mud left behind out of the tractor tires in the boulevard during the muddy spring plantings or the muddy fall harvest? It might not just be mud, because they may be moving after cleaning up feedlot or loading cattle to take to market. Who's gonna scrape that up? The people who live out here don't complain too much about all of this, because this is the lifestyle they chose when they purchased or built their homes. My papers are stuck, hold on. Now, all of us just want a very basic paved bypass, road up against the interstate where all the slow-moving vehicles and local residents can travel safely, stay out of Lilly's way, and not destroy all of the IEDC's decorative boulevards. We as a community are trying to take into consideration the needs and safety of everyone involved and come to an amicable compromise. Please be wise and do the same for us. I don't want to be here. I want to be at home playing with my grandkids.
Further poll comment?
Wanda Gar, 6446 West 400 North. I believe, and this is just a guess, that IEDC promised Lilly that you guys would vacate the road just to make them happy. You don't have to do that. Personally, I'm just one of the farmers who use Whit Road to get from west side of 52 to the farming operations I have on 150 Whit Road and 500 North and on the other side of 39. There are lots of farmers who use those roads. They want you to vacate it. I see where you're stuck between a rock and a hard place. But the people that use that road really don't think you need to do that. Had they not, I am assuming IEDC promised Lilly that you guys would vacate that road had that not happened, their design engineers would come up with a different design where you wouldn't have had to, but for their convenience. You know, that's what they want you to do. Our forefathers paid for that road to be built. Who's gonna pay for the new road? If Lilly gets their way and it's on the east side of the railroad tracks, is that IEDC and our taxpayer money gonna pay for that? That's a question I'd like to have answered. And I keep hearing about the traffic study y'all are doing, having done for this project. Well, there's one thing, problem with that, having a traffic study this time of year, you're not having the farm equipment going up and down the road just to take into that. Thanks.
Further poll comment? Mr. Lawson, you good? This time then I'll close the public hearing. Ordnance 2023-01. Any questions? Actually, Ben, do you want to close or? Well, I shall see if there's any final questions from Ben on this.
I have a final question for Ben. Someone mentioned the 35-minute train stoppage. I heard in your presentation that it would not be blocking any road. So they have, they're gonna have the crossing. Yeah, there will be crossing guards. And they'll move that train if it happens to be there after they, when they're decoupling.
Yeah, so where they'll park the train will, should not impact 375 North. Again, I can't speak for 20 years from now if the trains get longer, but right now, the trains are at longest a half-mile long. So they're gonna put that siding and location so the train can stop without impacting 375. 450 likely will be impacted for a short period of time while they're decoupling to allow Lilly to get their cars. So the thought there is that they can pull forward north of the crossing and get out of the way to allow people to go, and then all those crossing arms could be manually operated. Because as you know, if the train is sitting there, the arms are gonna be down, but they can get out of the way of the crossing and manually lift the arms so people can cross. So will there be a short period of time where it's impacted? Sure, because the train's gonna have to slow down and stop. They can't stop on a dime, as we all know. So there'll be a time where they're slowing down, there will be a slow crossing, but the idea is they can get out of the way of those crossings to allow those to remain open for as much as possible while they're, for that 35 minutes.
So will there be any kind of enforcement mechanism to ensure that that happens?
I don't know that I can answer that question necessarily. I mean, certainly it's CSX's railroad, and I don't know that we have much ability to dictate to them how they use their railroad, obviously. So I don't specifically know the answer to that question, but they are working with Lilly to try to make the process as efficient as possible and try to impact those crossings as little as possible.
Since you don't know it now, is there a way that you might be able to find something out if that's a possibility? And who's, who would be the enforcement agent? I don't know.
We can do some investigation. I don't know if those that are traffic engineers or road engineers in the room have a better idea of how that interaction happens with CSX. It's not something that I regularly do, but we can do some research and see what we can find out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ben? This time then I'll read the ordinance.
I got a comment. I don't have any questions for Ben, it is, but anyway, I was looking at the, I didn't lose it here, the road drawings and so forth. Those are really kind of proposed drawings that they would look at. Mr. Loose, right? I forgot I was speaking about how wide, yeah, the farm equipment is awful, awful big and has been for years. And I don't think it's getting smaller either. But there's two county commissioners in this room as well and a county councilman, and they'll probably agree with me. We, the county and the city both, did not have the money to widen all these roads to make them really wide enough for all farm equipment. You know, you guys have taken up the road and you have for years, and you're gonna continue because we just can't make, afford to make the roads wide enough. And I'm looking at one drawing here and it looks like it's got probably maybe 80-foot right-of-way there on 300 North. It would take probably, Mr. Loose was speaking, probably 15, 16-foot lane or something like that to get the combines down the road here comfortably. You know, that's gonna take 100, 120-foot right-of-way. You know, we just can't, nobody can afford to buy that right-of-way and to make those roads fit for every county road in the county. So it's just something that we're gonna have to deal with. And I just realized, these are just concept drawings. You know, I think as we get into discussions, I highly encourage Pure Development to look at the roads and the widths of the roads and so forth for combines and for truck traffic. Truck traffic is a major, will be a major problem, you know, and so forth. And, you know, I'm gonna make the comment, because I've been out and looked, I was out there last week, drove all over the whole area last week. I was out there this evening before I came here, take a look again. You know, I know the area fairly well. You know, to cross railroad tracks twice for the combine is absolute pain in the rear end. You know, I don't know how you would do it, honestly. Because it's, it'd take a sharp turn to make the turn, then you gotta turn again, and then you could possibly have to wait on the tracks. I don't encourage that road at all. Going the west side is a long way around there. If you guys are comfortable about going that way, I can support that way. But as far as going, crossing that railroad tracks twice, and why get into traffic? You know, it's like, I'm gonna take three, I'm gonna take Whit Road north, I'm gonna take it up to 375. I'm still in the Lilly Project traffic all over around until I get to the tracks. Well, if I can get to the point where I could turn left and go all around the west side, I'm out of that traffic. I don't have to worry about it until I get to 450 nor, or until I get around to 450 and Whit Road north. Well, I'm gonna tell you, you're gonna have a lot of traffic there. Doesn't make any difference. That's gonna be the construction lane or traffic to get in. You're gonna have a lot of traffic. You know, when you're in and out in the spring trying to get out of the cross there to get in your field, or you're in the fall trying to pick up, I'm telling you, there's gonna be a lot of traffic on Whit Road north, because that's gonna be the construction end to get in. So just be aware, that's where it's gonna be. That's where you're, it's gonna be worse than you even think 39's gonna be, because you're dealing with heavy truck equipment coming down through there and God knows what all, and it's gonna be constant.
So 3 to 5-year life, though, once you get past that, you're out of it?
You get past that, you should be out of it. That's correct. So, but I just want to, want you to think about that, so. And that's, honestly, that's where I'm gonna probably stand on this project, is I'm gonna look at these to be west and not east, because an east lane just doesn't, in my opinion, doesn't not fit. You know, I drove through, I worked in construction for 20-some years and handled hauling equipment and stuff around. It's not easy crossing railroad tracks twice.
Read the ordinance, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Ordnance 2023-01, Concerns and Ordinants for this council to vacate public ways. Whereas it's the duty and responsibility of this council to maintain public right-of-way for the benefit of the citizens of the city and to vacate those no longer needed for the benefit of the public. Whereas there's been filed before the law-
you're in the fall trying to pick up, I'm telling you, there's gonna be a lot of traffic on Whit Road north. Because that's gonna be the construction end to get in. So, just be aware. That's where it's gonna be. That's where you're, it's gonna be worse than you even think 39's gonna be. Because you're dealing with heavy truck equipment coming down through there, and God knows what all, and it's gonna be constant.
It's a three-to-five-year life, though. Once you get past that, you're out of it.
You get past that, you should be out of it. That's correct. So, but I just want you to think about that. So, and that's, honestly, that's where I'm gonna probably stand on this project, is I'm gonna look, it needs to be west and not east, because an east lane just doesn't, in my opinion, doesn't not fit. You know, I drove through construction. I've worked in construction for 20-some years and handled hauling equipment and stuff around. It's not easy crossing railroad tracks twice.
Rob, read the ordinance, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Ordinance 2023-01, concerns and ordinance for this council to vacate public ways. Whereas it's the duty and responsibility of this council to maintain public right-of-way for the benefit of the citizens of the city, and to vacate those no longer needed for the benefit of the public. Whereas there's been filed before the Lebanon Plan Commission, a petition, Docet 23-2, to vacate a portion of public street right-of-way of north Whit Road, again, that's county road north 150 west, specifically a 3,920 linear foot section of the road located between county road 375 north and county road 450 north. Collectively, that's defined as the real estate, and that is described in Exhibits A and B. Whereas the Plan Commission voted 8 to 0 to send a favorable recommendation to this council for consideration, with the condition that an alternative route to Whit Road is considered and required as part of the vacation request. Therefore, be it ordained that this council has met and finds as follows. Pursuant to Indiana Code, the city has the authority to vacate public right-of-ways, and now finds that the public right-of-way identified in Exhibits A and B attached here too and incorporated by reference is no longer needed for the benefit of the public. After a duly advertised and published public hearing pursuant to Indiana Code, this council finds it's proper and necessary to vacate the public right-of-ways identified in Exhibits A and B. The conveyance of the real estate as defined in this ordinance shall be to the Indiana Economic Development Corporation, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect in accordance with Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. Ordinance has been read on our first reading. They'll be taken up for second reading at our next city council meeting, which will be February 13th at 7:30 PM. All right, that concludes our afternoon business. Is there anything from council?
No, sir.
Okay. Move on to claims. Would there be a motion concerning the claims?
Make a motion, we pay the claims.
Motion to pay the claims. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from John. Will sir say aye?
Aye.
Oh, 7:15? Okay, clarify, meeting is 7:15, not 7:30. Okay. With that, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Sierra. Will they say aye?
Aye.
Let's close. We are adjourned.